A meeting of Westford Select Board will start tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Andrea.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sure some from the fire department do that, but I didn't think of it in time. Because our first order of business is open forum, and the first item on the forum is to congratulate, recognize, say goodbye to Chief Joe Targ after thirty-seven years of full-time service on the fire department, and even more than that, I think, in terms of the call department. Kristin has a full bio, so I'm just giving the quick introduction. So Kristin, if you want to.
Yeah, absolutely. First off, I'll just start by saying, Joe, it's been a pleasure to work with you for almost two years. You've taught me so much about the fire service and emergency management, not only here in Westford, but as through your work throughout the region and throughout the states. And I always appreciate your insight and your helpfulness, and we're certainly going to miss you at the station, but I know you'll be around town. So just wanted to really highlight some of the important moments of Joe's career. He actually, and there's a lot of good dates in this bio as well. On January 1st, 1978, Joe started with the auxiliary fire. And then in April of 1981, he started with call department and EMT. Then in October of 1986, a call lieutenant. And then full-time on 7/17/87, a full-time firefighter and EMT. He was then promoted to call captain in 1988, a permanent captain in September of 1997. He was then promoted to acting chief and then interim chief in July of 2013, and then promoted to chief on January 14th, 2014. He's also been the town's deputy director of emergency management, starting in 1999. In 2000, emergency management director. In July of 2012, the communication T-State COMU, and I'm sure you all know what that stands for. I need a little bit of a primer on that. And then in June of 2013, STARS. And we certainly appreciate that Joe has decided to stay on board as our emergency management director till at least the end of June, because we've had several transitions in that. So we really appreciate your continued success there. And we wish you well, some relaxation and fun in your retirement. And I just want to personally thank you very much for your service.
So, Joe, I'll add a few words, maybe a few more words. But I was a brand-new selectman back then, when we had an opening for fire chief, and we had truly a nationwide search. We actually had an applicant from Arizona who applied for that job. We didn't interview him, but we interviewed, I think, eight candidates. I forget exactly. We had, I think, three back for a second interview. But truly, I mean, it was a major search. In fact, of all the officers who applied for the job, all of them were now chief someplace. It was a really tough group of guys to interview with, and it did really, really well. Of course, it helped or hurt, I don't know what it was. We had the fire on Beaverbrook Road. You were in temporary command, and we heard from the chiefs of responding to lay companies how well-run Westford was. So we kind of had a decision made for us by you, but through your performance at that fire. Woody was on that committee too, as I recall. You know, since then, we've built a brand-new fire station. You're a key part of that. Do training ground, a key part of that. I think we're going to have to make sure you serve a trainer to handle that communications tower, because no one else knows how to make that thing run, I don't think, like you do. Probably the last chief, I think, we'll ever have, who had a four-station model through their career. No longer going to be able to have anybody in charge. We remember working out of Forge or Graniteville. Well, I guess you still could work out of the IT department, but you know, not the fire department. So I just really wanted to say thanks. It's been a great eleven years that I've known you as chief, and it's been great for the department. It's grown in numbers, it's grown, I think, in quality, facilities, you know, all around. It's just been a tremendous experience working with you. So thank you and congratulations. Before I begin, can we have a media-based circle of appreciation? We can frame it at your.
Okay. I just want to say, first of all, I want to thank the members of the Westford Fire Department, past and present. It's been an honor and privilege to be able to surround myself with such amazing people. The Select Board, thank you. I believe the majority were on eleven years ago when I was appointed. So I thank you for having the confidence in me. I'd like to thank all the boards, commissioners, commissions, and departments I've worked with through the years. Building Department, Building Committee was a huge one, because we really did a good job. I think on that station, we came in under budget, so very proud of that. And then just want to thank my family for putting up with all this over the years with all these. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
If any of the members want to say a word, you're welcome, or not. We're on camera, you can't sort your ready things, so.
Scott, just one thing. So, thank you, Joe. Your legacy is going to live on a long time. I was able to work with you and Scott on first responder staffing study, which, you know, I was brand-new on the Select Board. You helped educate me on how, you know, first responders work and the intricacies of that, how important it is, the challenges that you face, and so I appreciate that. Town School Safety Task Force, I think we're going to know that our kids had a solid best effort to keep them safe in the building, and you were a big, big part of that. So appreciate all you did to educate me, and I'm sure your legacy lives on with everybody here that you helped educate along the way.
Anything else for John?
I remember one incident, Joe, when I was on one of the committees, and you showed up at our house. I've had a few calls at our house helping us out. And you were on the, I don't know, I think you drove up in your chief vehicle, but you were part of the response team. And I thought, well, this must be some special perk, since I'm on one of the committees and stuff. And so I started asking about that, said, no, we're down to the third ambulance. The one thing that stood out in those visits is your EMTs and your firemen are professional. They're kind, they're efficient, and that leads to, it's their training, but it also tends to leadership. It shows your leadership in the department, and I think it's something you ought to be very proud of. You have a very, very excellent, outstanding fire department. Thanks to you and thanks to the men in the department, men and women.
I hate to ask, anything else open forum?
How could you possibly?
Not tonight.
Well, that, thanks, and as we say goodbye to one chief, we say hello to another one. And so tonight, we have a request to ratify Kristin's appointment, Thomas's appointment, of Mike Dennehy as our new Westford Fire Chief effective December 28th, 2024. So I guess before we introduce him, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
So Mike, I remember meeting you as you were firefighter Dennehy. There was motor vehicle accident on Letting Road, and you showed up on the engine as Lieutenant Dennehy. I think we were building the center fire station when I met Captain Dennehy. And I think that, you know, in the course became deputy. I think that the fact that you've managed to fix that roof after three years. So we built this fire station on time, under budget. We had issues with really pernicious leaks in the roof. And, you know, we actually had great architects, great contractors. I mean, everybody did their best to try to fix it. No one said pass the buck, but it was three years of getting that thing fixed. And Mike really was the lead here, persisting on that. So anyway, thank you for that. And Kristin and I interviewed, you know, Mike for chief, I think, two weeks ago now. Great interview. It was kind of a, so what do you have for, you know, ideas? We went to the department and really impressed that you came in with not just more of the same, but, you know, just new thoughts of how to improve the department, take it new places, and even perhaps bring back some old things that we've missed over the years because of, you know, staffing lack, or lack of staffing, or lack of funding. So congratulations. Welcome to the head of department. Sorry to get to work with us all the more, but if you want to say anything, it's.
I want to thank you all. I appreciate the support and stuff, and I look forward to moving to the department, keep it going, building off what Chief Targ has set a foundation on.
We wouldn't roast, Joe, do you want to roast Mike?
Don't give him opportunities. He's going to get enough of that at the station.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming to stay if you'd like.
Thank you all for showing so much support for the chief and now incoming chief. We really appreciate it.
Look forward to working with you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everybody be safe.
Sorry for delaying, changing the guard to get people in and out of the room. So next up, we have ARPA funding first review, the project's approved, what funds we've spent and have yet available, and then what to do with the remaining amounts. Make sure we spend it before end of the year, so we can get our full usage out of Uncle Sam's money. So Kristin, you and Dan have the.
Yes, so this is, I keep saying final ARPA, but this is really the final ARPA. I will turn it over to Dan to do what he does best, is give us the financial update of what we have. And then we have a few additional requests for your consideration this evening, and then look forward to wrapping up all the contracts, to have those ready to go, to meet the federal regulations and move forward and continue to wrap up the projects we have going. So Dan, I'll turn it to you.
So I just have to say, it's been a very busy past two weeks trying to close out and finish up all these projects. Just a big shout-out to Jesse Byer for helping with all this and organizing it. Since our last meeting, we did close out $194,375 from other projects that were completed. Most recently, police training this weekend. So that's the reason that the numbers came to you later today, just so we could have those final appropriations. And our balance currently available is $489,887.58, and we do have to move all that money tonight if possible. And then there are a couple of projects before you tonight, one for the communications consultant for a second year, and the other as a supplemental for the cruiser that was approved earlier this year. And then a request to move, transfer money to the health insurance trust, which we would, if approved, we would use to pay the December health insurance bill.
The two projects are. I have a general question, and this is just for the public, Dan. How many projects did we fund with ARPA money? Do you have that number?
Yep, I do have that.
I think the public would be interested.
Get a pie chart, man.
We should have a pie chart for this. I could probably turn some of this into a pie chart, but let me do a quick count real quick. Again, we were allocated over $7.4 million three years ago, and this is the last appropriations here. So I'm just going to do a quick count here. It's still going, there's so many.
Some of them were pretty small, you know, for.
But they count, Scott.
Well, no, 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 but it does make a big number.
Yeah, we broke them down by different categories and everything like that. So there's, let's see here. They just keep going, I'm sorry.
Why is he doing that? Do you want to talk about the other?
Yeah, while there's counting, fingers and toes, you can use both, Dan. Kristin, if you want to explain the communication consultant in particular?
Absolutely, sure. So a few meetings ago, we had requested $65,000 in ARPA to retain a consultant to help us develop a communications plan, as well as engage in town-wide communication services for a period of one year. At that point in time, we'd also discussed the potential to put in the RFP for the communications consultant to continue on for a second year of town-wide communication support, as well as help us with special projects, such as the annual report, or if we were going for certain funding for a certain type of project, to help us with that. Last week, we interviewed two firms that we received proposals from. In total, we received proposals from seven firms. Chris was helpful in reviewing those proposals with us. We, again, we interviewed two firms, and later on this evening, we are going to ask for your recommendation to go with Capital Strategic Solutions for the capital, excuse me, the communications plan and the services. We felt that their services would benefit Westford for a second year and for those special projects, so we are asking for that additional $80,000 for that second year and the ancillary project. So I had sent the board the backup information on Friday related to that. It is all subject to negotiation. We are going to, if the board moves forward with Capital Strategic Solutions this evening, we would negotiate that contract and come up with the final amounts. But we feel that $80,000 is fair for that second year.
Any questions? Can I answer, Dan, or should we go into the police cruiser?
Hundred and twenty projects.
With that, I guess we get the memo, but just for the public, the item B on the police cruiser?
Sure, yes. So when the police department requested that cruiser, I think it was a year and a half ago that they requested the cruiser?
There was one recently.
One recently too, in the fall. But the pricing has changed since then. So to fit out that cruiser and for the entire cost, where they're asking for an additional $6,624.61.
And then the remainder, I guess, so that's, any questions on that one? I think we'll do them all at once, so health insurance trust?
Yeah, absolutely. So this was a later memo to you this afternoon, because Dan, like Dan said, he and Jesse were running the final numbers. Right now, we would have to allocate $403,262.97 to the health insurance trust to be paid for the December health insurance payment. There is an item in the motion that if there is any closeouts between now and December 31st, that you would authorize that to be pushed to the trust as well. Did I miss anything related to that?
We would alert you if there's anything closed out unexpectedly. We don't think it's going to happen, but just as a fail-safe. That way you won't have to meet again to re-approvate those funds. If it's a large amount, then yeah, it's. We just want to give you the option to meet again if there is a large closeout, but we are not expecting it now.
My understanding is that this is only a good thing for the budget. It's also a good thing for the employees.
Well, it helps us build up that trust dollar amount in order to hopefully not raise rates as much as we anticipated. We also have an opportunity through the budget process that we're going forward with in January and February. If this does go towards the trust, we can reassess that balance, perhaps move some of the fiscal year '26 funding that's currently going towards health insurance to perhaps OPEB or something like that. So we feel that we could be more flexible with our budgeting, perhaps as well, going into fiscal '26 if this gets pushed into the health insurance trust.
I just have a general question for Dan. Are we at this point expecting any more closeouts? I guess, so there shouldn't be any closeouts, like after December 31st?
There should not be. Everything has a purchase order or a contract, so if, I can't imagine a scenario where that happens, but.
If it did, would we have to give the money back to the government, or? Okay.
So we were very diligent with our speaking with all the departments, so.
Great, thank you.
So is there a motion to approve $80,000 for communication consultant, $6,624.61 for the cruiser, and the remainder to go to the health insurance trust? A second? All in favor? Next, we're a tad early, but request to approve a pilot agreement relative to.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
For all your work on that, Dan.
Request to approve a pilot agreement relative to 35 Town Farm Road residences, 35 senior housing units located at 35 Town Farm Road. Just to be really clear, pilot, payment in lieu of taxes. So in many cases, properties which have certain exemptions for property taxes, in lieu of that, they pay the town some agreed-upon fee as part of the purchase agreement that we had with Trace for Town Farm. They had agreed to, I believe, $12,000 in a pilot, $11,000 in a pilot. So that's being increased a bit, but David?
He's on the Zoom, yes.
Sorry, Dave, I saw you with your thunder, but love the backdrop.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much. Yes, we're at the point now in the purchase and sales paragraph or section 18, called for a pilot agreement to be executed. And at that time, it was $11,000, and now we've moved it up to $12,500. And the initial request to, for funding has gone in in November. We're awaiting word from the state to submit the full application. And what is nice about trying to have this approved tonight is I can send in an email to the state and say, hi, everyone, just to let you know, Westford has approved the pilot, and we're still here, we're ready to go, and we want this to move forward. So we're hoping that it will be funded in this round, and we anticipate in October 2025, initially in October 2025, opening. We're about 14 to 16 months behind schedule, which is not a surprise. And we're hoping that, you know, we will be in the ground a year from now, or about a year from now, and occupancy 12 months, you know, after that starting. But again, we're waiting, we're going to wait for the state to award the funds, but we're hopeful this time, it's our second time in.
And the Board of Assessors are meeting on Friday morning to review and sign the pilot if the board authorizes that this evening as well, so it's.
So is there any formal language we have to adopt, or just?
So the recommended motion would be to authorize a Select Board, excuse me, to have the Select Board vote to approve the agreement, subject to review and approval by town council, and to authorize the town manager to sign on behalf of the board, provided that there's no material changes. So we had town council review that. They were just waiting for a few dates from David that he did supply this evening. So if the board is comfortable with that motion, we can move forward, and then subsequently have the assessors, the Board of Assessors, sign on Friday.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Any questions from the audience before I forget? I see friendly faces out there, so, okay. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Five, zero, thank you.
Dave, do you know when you might expect to hear from the state?
So we're hoping to hear right after the first of the year for the full funding application to be, like, the door to be opened. So that will happen. We will be submitting. They reached out to me and they said, David, you've submitted two applications, one for Chelmsford and one for Westford. Which one is the one you want to go forward? We replied back and they said, Westford, it's the second time in, it has to be funded. So that, so the request to submit the full package will occur in January with a deadline of April of 2025. At that point, we always hope by July 1st of 2025, the award letters would be coming out, or the formal announcements. And so the big thing that I want to be, I want, let's keep our fingers crossed for July 1st of 2025. And at that point, once we have the funding, you know, announcement, we can move towards closing. And as I always tell people, when you're buying a house, you have one lawyer, or two lawyers, and a bank. When we do a closing, we have six to nine funding sources. And for them to get to the table, it usually takes three to four months. So July 2025, three or four months for closing, for the money to be released, construction to start. You know, I'll say December 2025, hopefully at the latest.
Thank you.
All the answers, sorry.
Thank you for persisting, David, because this is, when it's built, and I say when, it'll be, it'll be a great thing for the town, so.
And we will be back before the board to sign the CPA grant agreement, the affordable housing restriction, and the historic preservation restriction. So those are all things that are on our radar right now to bring back to you.
Well, Dave, happy holidays.
Happy holidays to all of you, and as always, thank you so much, Kristin. Thank you for all your work. I appreciate you and your team. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Next, we have a request to approve vintage work as approved by the Conservation Commission for the property located at 31 to 35 Tad Mc Road in accordance with the agricultural preservation restriction.
If you want to wait on this one, we do have, we have Mr. Lombardo from Contracts here that we could let him go early, item C3.
Okay. Yes, on a town ministry report, item C3, Lombardo Associates for wastewater treatment analysis at 12 North Main Street, amount of $129,131, as requested by Land Use Management Department. So, Mr. Lombardo, if you want to.
I can help tee that up too. I can help tee that up. So the town was awarded through the community, one stop, a grand of $190,000 to study market analysis and wastewater for 12 North Main Street. We'd originally gone out with one RFP several months ago for both projects, and we did not receive any proposals back. So the land use department separated those proposals, one for wastewater analysis and one for market analysis, and we were successful in receiving proposals back for each. So this evening, we're requesting that the board authorize Lombardo Associates to perform the wastewater treatment analysis. So Mr. Lombardo is here on behalf of his company, and certainly he can chime in if the board wishes, or we can move forward, however you wish.
Yeah, are there any questions? In the case, is there a motion to approve? Favor? Aye. Thank you for coming.
You're out of here.
Somebody could try to hear early.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to meet you, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Nice to come for a celebration.
Look forward to seeing you again when we get some findings.
Appreciate your confidence.
Well, while we're here, do you mind of the contract with the communication consultant? We've already approved the.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we have a contract for Capital Strategic Solutions for communication consultant services, amount of up to $145,000, as requested by the town manager's office. And while we're here, minutes for approval and for release, regular session minutes of December 24th, 2024, October 8th, 2024, October 22nd, 2024, October 29th, 2024, and November 12th of 2024. Is there a motion, all like Patty's wording? Is there a motion to approve?
Go move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to do the purchase orders, Scott?
Yeah, may as well, because we just approved the police cruiser too. A great question it is.
Yeah, so Jarvis Ford for a 2025 Ford hybrid police interceptor in the amount of $65,107.61, as requested by the police department.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This agreement?
So you have Ellen Rainville on the line, if you'd like to do that now.
We don't have anybody here to get to speak to the CONCOM restrictions, so I guess.
Yeah, and if not, I can take the CONCOM if they don't come here. But we just promoted Ellen. So Mike Edwards and Ellen Rainville have been working on a lease for the off-site location of the J.B. Fletcher Library. We went out for a request for proposal and received two proposals, I believe, but one was not acceptable or not responsive. So Ellen and her team and our team in the town manager's office have been working with the owner of. 515 Groton Road on that lease agreement. So I will turn it over to Mike and Ellen to present where we are right now in the timeline and what your request is to the board.
So I want to thank Mike for all of his help on this, and I know you will chime in as well. So in July, we sent out the RFP and received two responses the week after Labor Day. We are now looking at 515 Groton Road, which allows us about 13,000 square feet, both of storage space on grade for book collections and public space and office space for the library staff. So we're looking at a 24-month lease. We need to segue in pound fiber, our Comcast line, stacks, followed by collections, followed by furnishings, and this is in line with the RFP that we sent out and with the responses that we got back. So we're asking that you authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute the lease, which is almost complete. We're just looking at a few final items, such as snow removal and some of the impact of the library's service operational week extending beyond the normal business week. And I'll just ask Mike if he would like to chime in.
No, I think Ellen captured everything. There's, the reason we changed the original memo that had approved the lease is because we do have a little bit of language that we need to clear up around the snow removal. Nothing will change the cost. It's just making sure that, that we've got everything in place so that if our people need to do work on snow removal, that we have the proper coverages and indemnification across the board for that. So it's really just language clarifications we still need to work through.
Any questions? Chris, what do we have for parking there?
Ellen, parking?
Parking, we, we are accorded about 35 parking spaces. We are also limited as to the number of public that can be on the second floor at any given time. And it actually is going to, we're going to have reduced foot traffic because we're going to be doing all of our children's programming offsite, and we won't have a meeting room at this site. So we think that we're going to be able to handle the reduced parking. And we typically would have 76 people an hour in the library, but that won't be the case with this site because of the reduced meeting room use that we will not be able to offer.
And it has handicap parking, and it's handicap accessible?
Yes. There'll be a book drop return as well.
John, I think you had your hand up, too.
Yeah. How's this fit in? When is the, when are you going out for bid on the construction?
We hope to go out to bid the final week of January, sometime between January 24th and 29th. But we need to be moving things out of our building so that once the contract is signed, we'll be able to vacate the building and turn it over to the construction firm.
Okay. One other question. We talk about additional rent, and there's no number in there for that. What would be an estimate on that? Do you have any idea?
There won't be any additional rent on this. This was a standard lease contract that we had from our town council.
Okay.
It doesn't contemplate additional rent because the tenant, or the landlord provides all the utilities and snow removal.
What about taxes?
I missed that, John. I'm sorry.
Taxes? I mean, you have it here that the taxes will be assessed and that tenants shall pay any real estate, personal property, levies, betterment?
That's captured within the rent amount that we have, not the additional rent. If that's something we need to go back and look, we'll have to make sure we talk with town council. We're not paying anything additional for taxes.
Okay. Yeah, that was concerned. Okay. One other question. The fire department will require a life safety inspection. Have any additional costs come up with that, or has that already been done?
That's, that's on the responsibility of the landlord. And that's, we're working through that little last piece of language also, so you may notice that I think that's still supposed to be underlined. But we just need to get the exact wording of, you know, the generator test, that kind of stuff. But our fire department's been actively working with them.
This is well within your budget, Dan?
Yes, this is within the project budget.
Okay.
Yeah, we won't have any additional costs associated with that. It's all on the landlord.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? So we have a motion to authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute the lease agreement with MOB 2 LLC for temporary public library and storage space at 515 Groton Road, Westford, inclusive of base rent utilities in the amount as follows. Year one, $243,060 to be paid monthly in the amount of $20,255. In year two, $247,921 to be paid monthly in the amount of $2660.08. And year three, monthly cost of $21,073 as requested by the town Board of Library Trustees and the Permanent Town Building Committee Building Project pursuant to committee assessment and a unanimous decision of a joint meeting of the Board of Library Trustees and the Permanent Town Building Committee to proceed this bidder as the only fully responsible bidder on September 30th, 2024.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
It is 7/35, so come back to the 7/35 item to approve drainage work as approved by the Conservation Commission for the property located at 31 to 35 Tad Mc Road in accordance with the agricultural preservation restriction.
I can handle that. So our, so the town of Westford Select Board holds an agricultural preservation restriction on this property. The operator of the farm has proposed to do several drainage improvements to improve the operations that are occurring there at this point in time. So in accordance with the agricultural preservation restriction, they were required to get Conservation Commission approval, which they did, and then they are required to get Select Board approval as well. Also, just wanted to inform the board that we reviewed this, these drainage improvements with the town engineer, and they are in full of support, and they've reviewed the improvements. So this evening, we'd be asking for your final support and approval of those so they can move forward with that construction.
Are you Lauren?
I'm Lauren.
Okay, so if you...
Hi, Dad, Keith.
Okay, well, we know Keith really well, so if you want to, you know, speak to the project, you don't have to, but if you're...
No, it's...
If you want, I'm just coming up to the table because of the microphone. Thank you.
What are we talking about? What are we talking about?
Go.
You want me to talk?
Your project.
So, what year was it? Last year, the year before? The year we had all that rain, we had a lot of standing water, and it became obvious that if we have another year like that, we're going to have a lot of damage. Because we lost, you know, a row of trees, and then trees here and there are pretty seriously damaged, or they're just not doing particularly well. And before, so we're in the process of transitioning the farm from my father to me, and so we're moving forward with, you know, improving the farm, planting more trees, different varieties, whatever, as we go along. And it seemed like doing those things without dealing with the drainage issues was not particularly wise. So I wrote a grant, and as part of that grant, I need to get sign off from all the stakeholders on the APR. So I have, I think you have the form that I need, that they need, just to know that you guys are okay, because the funding is through the Department of Agriculture.
Any questions? John?
Well, not, not for the requirement, I agree with that. But in the, in the correspondence, the town engineer says the Select Board may need to require additional improvements to mitigate the flow of stormwater. I'd like to, you know, I'm for approving it, but I'd like to understand that a little more from the town engineer as to, he must have made some calculations to this to say that additional...
Like, I think you have, do you have...
I think that's an old, what, so...
Do you have the full report from Algeany?
Well, I have everything that's in the package, and this is a...
What, what date is that email from?
Probably December the 13th, 2024, 2/27.
I think what Paul was saying is that after this is done, if there are impacts to the town's system, that that would then have to be looked at, and we would have to figure out, you know, how to address those impacts. As I recall, that's, I think that's what he was saying in his email, as I recall, so that we, we won't know...
Until after.
Until after it's done.
It seems like to me that's an engineering problem. I mean, we know, we know calculations like that. We know what we experience here. You know, I, I think, I agree with the solution. Looks good.
But because in the unlikely event that we experience increased runoff that was not accounted for by the designers, the Select Board may need to require additional improvements to mitigate the stormwater flow. So I think that is, once we see the system operating, if you're not comfortable with that.
We have an unusual...
Well, we can't, we can't forecast the unknown, so.
And he went out and they smoke tested all the drains on Tad Mc. So there are three along the road in front of the property. So they did all that. He spoke to the...
Actually, three drains across, down the hill from that.
They go under.
Cat Jasons.
Okay.
I mean, and one is from like 18-something, one is from the 50s, and then one is pretty recent.
Okay.
So they smoke tested those. They spoke with the drainage engineers for, I think, like an hour and a half. So I, I think that they hashed out all the concerns.
We have to keep it going. There are generations of kids yet to pick apples there, so.
There you go.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will sign.
So the little paper, yeah, I need to just be able to send that into the...
Yeah, so we'll get that here.
All right.
Once we get done, we go through the, the roll of passing papers around to each other, so. We'll be ready tomorrow morning, probably.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to alternate business, we have a request to review and act upon, review and act to extend the MOU between the town of Westford, Westford Community Access Television for a period of six months. Any questions?
So I have Sarah Fletcher's being promoted as well.
I think we, I think we discussed, Sarah alluded to this at our last meeting.
Right.
So if you want to, I know we've had time calls involved as to whether we can do it. The answer is yes. So Sarah, if you have anything to add?
And Christie's here from the board as well. I promoted her. I don't know if she, oh, she's...
I can speak to it.
Seems...
We just, we're...
There's Sarah.
Hi, it's Sarah. I'm here.
So I gather it'll be a year, this is pretty straightforward, just extending the current conditions for another six months. So if you wanted to add anything at all before I took it to a vote, or if Christie does.
Seems like kind of...
I see no, I see no questions here, so.
Yeah, I mean, we need six months to negotiate whatever new MOU we want or to extend the one we have. So it kind of seems like a no-brainer to me.
And for those listening at home who are wondering, yes, because it's a contract that the Select Board entered into. Originally, we had the ability to, like, to say, extend it for six more weeks without any kind of a...
Months.
Sorry, six months, rather, without any kind of a extra negotiation. So that being...
I'll move to extend the MOU with Westford Cat for an additional six months.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question, since I'm up here?
Yes.
Christie Bates, 23 Pierce Ave., and I'm on the Westford Cat Board. Who, do you know who would be doing the negotiation for the MOU? How that works going forward? We haven't done one with this current board.
We haven't selected who, I mean, I'd certainly be involved in that. I don't know if a member of the board was involved in 2018.
I don't remember.
I was involved with it, but I don't remember.
And I would, maybe the Communication Advisory Committee as well?
Well, certainly with this, with this current embodiment, yeah. I mean, if you're looking for a volunteer, I'd be happy to do it. I don't know if it...
And the Communication Advisory Committee as well? Were they involved? Do you know?
I think their function's a little bit different.
They're different. They're for the Verizon and the Comcast contracts. Okay.
I think there's someone from Select Board.
They all agree that Tom can be our representative?
Hey.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks.
And next, we have to review and act upon the First Parish Church Under Community Preservation Grant Agreement. We discussed this also last week.
I was the one who had some concerns and questions. I worked with Mike, who worked with town council, and all of my questions and concerns were addressed, and a couple of revisions were made to the grant agreement. I'm offset to move forward to execute the agreement, so I'll move to approve it.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
I abstain.
Board of人事 updates. None appearing. We've already covered the town manager's report, I believe, in full.
Do we have stuff in chat? Is there anything? I just noticed that we...
Sorry.
Oh.
Sarah said, thank you.
You're welcome.
None appearing? Okay, so is there a motion to waive reading correspondence?
No, I think I would like, the correspondence that we have tonight is a thank you to our Chief of Police, as well as to Cory Pellidoo for helping the Boxborough Police Department train their K-9 dog, and also for, I guess, just leadership and mentorship that Chief Chambers has offered them over the years. So I just, I think we should, like to acknowledge Chief Chambers and Cory, and also, again, I think it's just an example of the police department that we have, its willingness to work with, not only with us in our community, but with other communities to keep all of us safe. So thank you to the chief, and thank you to the Westford Police Department.
In fact, if you weren't on Facebook today, you would have thought, you probably missed the fact that they saved a 20-year-old cat from, it was on the ice, probably blind and wandered on the ice. Call came in, it's a bi-stranger, did get to it and get it off the ice, but the police took it to the veterinarian, and in spite of having no measured body temperature, it did recover, and they found the owner. So, you know, thank you for that as well.
Thank you to Animal Control for assisting with that as well.
Maybe news tonight. It was on Channel 5.
Was it?
Was it? Yep. So odd.
Well, there's some good news to end the meetings.
Yes.
Is there a motion to waive other correspondence?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Westford. Happy holidays.
Good night, Westford. Everybody have happy and safe holidays.
See you in the new year.